All right, I'll call it a order of the town of deserve planning board meeting for April twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. Welcome aboard. How are we, Meredith?
I'm good, Bill. How are you?
Fantastic.
Thank goodness, we have these new board members because they're really holding up the boat, aren't they?
Keeping us on an even keel. Well, um, minutes, do we recall what?
You have minutes, but we need Tracy here.
Of course. So that's.
Didn't hear from her, did you?
I did not hear from Tracy, no.
She's not online either, so I'll come back, I guess, then.
Got it.
Maybe she'll show up.
Yeah, and then we'll circle back to it. Um, if she does, you know, item three on the agenda that's been postponed till May eighth. And they can jump right down to item four. We've got an update from the land use zoning ordinance advisory group and Gail and Ellen are gonna tell us what what good things have been happening over there.
Yeah. Um, I think you all have gotten copies of Noel's work prior to that meeting. Um, it was the, it was the, um, list of the the partial or incomplete working list of tasks for the for that committee for the next year. And also a rough schedule for the for the complete year, how to break that down and how to process that. And so that's all there. It's all open to amendment, addition, subtraction. Um, as people see fit, and if there are things that anybody in the planning board sees that should be considered or that you're not favored considering that it would be useful, A, you're of course always welcome at those meetings. And B, um, we could try to convey um, sentiments of individuals on this board as best we can when we go to the meetings.
Tracy's been coming to the meeting.
Yeah, Tracy's been coming to the meetings. Uh, she was at the meeting last time. Um, so the last thing, last meeting, we discussed um, an idea that Katrina Patton has brought forward, which is that in certain neighborhoods, we would consider uh, the development of and recommendation of not only a minimum lot size, but a maximum lot size. And there are specific neighborhoods in particular she focuses on, although that is not a final or completely start, and she draws attention to an area called Sylvan City, which is not just, but largely the other village commercial district that kind of was bounded by Millbrook and and Joy Road and I I don't quote me in the exact boundaries, but um, and also the area in Seal Harbor, the Dunbars and um, maybe bounded by the Stanley Book Roll, and again, that's a fluid definition of what that is. And if you look at those, they are predominantly small lots. Um, they certainly are turning over. It's interesting. I talked, met with Katrina yesterday to talk with her about it because we left the meeting last time with Katrina and I agreeing to try to draft something for the next Luso meeting that would better describe what the mission and purpose of this sort of idea would be and how one might approach it. Um, if you wanted to continue doing this. Um, and she is very keenly aware of lots of lots that are moving through different owners. They haven't yet started the process of people buying continuous lots and then turning it into one big lot with a giant house that may set a cascading effect in motion in those neighborhoods that then just ripples through those neighborhoods. There certainly is turnover. There certainly is houses transitioning from from year round to seasonal. But the essential character of the neighborhood remains. Um, and enough of it so that it's worth considering whether or not not only for now, but for future residents, whether or not a maximum lot size would allow communities to maintain some measure of control and some measure of scale and community that currently exists. And the question would be, does the, does the village, does, does the town think that's of value? Does that fit our definition of what it means to be a community, a community with with diverse opportunities and diverse uses? And is it worth using this along with other methods that we've been talking about to attempt to preserve this, not in amber, you know, not in perpetuity, but to give the community a chance to have some say over how those neighborhoods evolved. Um, and so that, we have these maps here that I, uh, prior to the last meeting, I had asked Noel if there were any maps. And he kindly brought a couple of big maps to sort of roughly explain those, those areas so we could refer to those. Um, that's roughly the idea. I mean, I talked at that meeting about availability and affordability and it was perceived, and I think probably rightly so, that it's possible that there's regard to this, that that ship has sailed in terms of affordability and that sort of thing. But for sure, it's never gonna happen. You know, you're never gonna even have young professionals or something who are able to be in these communities if, as, as year round residents, if, if you don't preserve any of these opportunities. So again, I think it's perceived as a, a tool um, to make, to keep the character of neighborhoods that present, I mean, kind of unique, but a specific type of value for the town as a whole that could be lost and do we want to see that if it's gonna change, it happens in a deliberate way? So, um, I'd love to hear any, and if I missed anything.
Nope.
Um, I'd love to hear thoughts that anybody has about that, and there'll be more opportunity for that. It will be just circle back around and discussed again at the next meeting because we're just sort of beginning to talk about it. Um, and I did draft something after my conversation with, with, um, uh, Katrina yesterday, but I sent it to her for her to think about and get back to me and see how badly I've messed it up, so. Um, we will have something to offer the community as a whole on the meeting, next meeting. Um, and that's that. And then the only other thing, I would, I would like to talk about what we touch on what we intend to have on the agenda for next time, in addition to the maximum lot size. Uh, there will be a revised table of allowed uses discussion, and I'm still kind of, I personally am still kind of in the dark about what that really means and why. So I'm, I'm all ears to try to learn what, what the issues are and what our, what our goals are for that. Um, and then compatibility, six A. Um, there's, um, um, there are, we will de- discuss the pros and cons of keeping six A and or parsing it out, those parts that are needed, parsing them out to more specific standards within the code, within the greater code. So, and anything that anybody wants to offer up on that as we head into those discussions.
I think it's really important that you do discuss that because I think all of us who have been on a planning board have expressed that that's despite the difficulty of getting through it, it's been a very important and unique aspect of the code. Um, and I know you guys are after it, but.
Yeah, I'd agree.
Planning boards express that they're resistant to that, so I don't.
You know, I, I would agree, even though, you know, the language of that can be a real stumbling block at times. I don't think that's necessarily something that we should just strike from the from section six A and it's, as it's got a lot of relevance, I think, you know, better maybe quantify, be, being able to apply it in a better quantified manner, I think would be a real plus, but, you know, I think that's absolutely a key, key section of our review.
Um, the meeting was on the twenty first, May twenty first. Um, yeah, if I understand what some people are saying, the goal would be to make the objectives of six A more quantifiable and more, um, um, uh, less subject to perhaps the opinion of whoever the five individuals happen to be who are on the board at that particular time.
I think we, I think the planning board needs to be enabled to have the review process put into a contextual discussion. Uh, and that's one of the things that six A does.
Um, can you elaborate on that?
Well, you know, the whole, you know, compatibility thing, everybody wants to get rid of, you know, and okay, yeah, that's pretty vague, but you know, we talked about compatibility in some pretty specific terms in the past, and I would hope that you know, that we could be given the tools to better quantify what compatibility is.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I I, I, I don't want to speak, I, I can't speak for anybody, but I, I suspect that will be an important part of the discussion.
I think that as, you know, things tighten up in town and things become closer and closer to each other and we start defining new areas new building types, I think that's gonna be a, a critical viewpoint, and it is now. I mean, I think, you know, just the first thing you were working on, if there's a maximum lot size,
Mm-hmm.
does that, you know, have, where does compatibility key into that discussion in this context of, say, Sylvan City? I mean,
Right.
what, what, what happens to businesses like Haynes Garage, who's got the biggest?
Yeah, well, for sure, they would be grandfathering.
Yeah.
They would have, I think that's already been recognized that there would be grandfathering of, you, you're not talking about making people make smaller lots.
Yeah.
You're talking about preserving the character and the compatibility of existing neighborhood. So, yeah, for sure, there's, there are things that would be grandfathered.
Yeah.
I guess I also think it's a very difficult thing to, um, get into because I feel like it's, we've used it in ways that I wouldn't have predicted, I guess. Um, again, like, if you try to get rid of that and then create specific um, or argue specific scenarios, we're not gonna have it when the scenarios that we didn't think of come up, you know, and I I guess, um, it, it gives us a flexibility um, and a, a human, rather than just trying to there, there's the desire to have this just checklist that you can, to cross all, all your points, but to this is the one section that allows us to bring it into a human conversation um, about what's agreeable to the neighborhood. And I know that, that you've expressed, Gail, that you don't like that, but that that I think has really been important to our community and, and our town, that we deal with things on this human relationship level and not just as a check.
John, the quarry remand even acknowledged that position of the on that. So it's, you know, it's not, yeah, I think that's really valid and incredibly difficult to quantify, and I think that's something we really need to wrap our heads around.
Right, I'm, I'm, I've never supposed to be, to having a human touch. Um, I guess, I think as much as possible, we need to see that the human touch is not simply the opinions of discreet individuals. Um, and I think that once you go through the whole elaborate process with all all the parameters, and then you go back and say, but I don't think it really fits in that way, but I, 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 I think there are challenges, particularly given the language of that section. I mean, the language of that section says, um, is it compatible with other uses that, with uses that are allowed in that type of district, not what the house next door is? Um, and I also, so, so I think there are lots of ways to look at it. Um, I agree with you. We're never gonna get to a completely cut and dried place. But we also need to allow for the reliability of the administration of the ordinance. Um, and I think people have as much, as a right to that as much as possible. Um, but again, I think my understanding is that people want to talk about how to place that. I mean, what does it mean to say that it's compatible to the, to the, to the neighborhood? Um, and what does it not mean? I think that's a discussion worth having, um, and maybe it's, you're able to articulate that more. I don't think it should ever end up being about what, what an individual feels they do or don't like in a situation, and I think that's always a struggle on planning boards too, that you have to be careful about. Um, so, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying six A, I, I am not saying six A, personally not saying six A needs to go. I'm saying there's a, there's a desire to have that conversation, and I think it's a worthy conversation. And, and that's, and that's all, but I certainly can also, um, I'm very clear about who I'm speaking for, and it'll be for me as an individual. And I can also relate for those who aren't at that meeting, um, that there are other, that there are individuals on the board who feel strongly about the latitude and the humanity that is allowed by a provision like that, or that's the perception. Um, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't, I, I want, I want them to understand what people are thinking about it, not what I think about it, so.
Before this compatibility was added to the ordinance, it used to say, that section used to say preserving the town's character or the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Character of the neighborhood, and you had no standard, you had nothing.
Right.
You know, just what you guys said.
Yeah.
That's all it said. It never gave you any compatibility to, like, density of development, the visual impact, the, you know, the, um, you know, size of the structure, nothing like that was put in the ordinance, and then that was removed where you are preserving the character of the neighborhood. But I think the problem, Adam.
Yeah, I think one of the problems, for example, is you can have changes in the character of the neighborhood, like you can have people buying lots, tearing down houses that have existed for decades and decades, and then building right to the right to the setback lines, huge big new houses that are completely out of character with the other houses on those streets, and those get approved. And then you get something a little different and a different set of character question, and that gets shot down, and that, that, those seem, or gets objected to. And those seem like incompatible decisions to me. I mean, they, what, so what it means to, to be compatible with character of the neighborhood, I think, is a discussion worth having. Um, and I know you struggled with that. I, well, on the last, on the most recent project, I mean, I sat here for a bunch of it and I listened to the studies that were done about, you know, and how you factor all that in. Um, I just, I, I think, I think any help that the planning board can get in articulating its work um, as clearly and effectively as possible is good help, so.
And I think you're gonna find Noel saying, we look into other ordinances and see what they come up with and how they deal with that type of.
Right.
But I also don't, I don't think that it's a criteria that, um, we've ever been able to use as like, because there aren't quantifiable things, it just is a point at which we have conversation, and anybody that's filling out the application is forced to say, am I being, am I trying to fit into this neighborhood? Or am I being disruptive to this neighborhood, or is what I want to do in any way, you know? Am I being considerate of other people? And it opens up the conversation during the planning board for people to express that they don't feel that the project is necessarily being considered. But it isn't a, well, your neighbor doesn't like it, and therefore we're not gonna let you build it because we've got nothing in it that would allow us even to do that. We have the rest of, of the whole application that has the specific quantifiable requirements, and that's all that we really can hold people to. But if we take that out, it's like, I hate what, you know, is, is happening, but none of us can stop it because there's nothing in this code to even bring it up and have the conversation of, hey, you're being a jerk and you're not being considerate of everybody else. You know, it's.
Well, but I think people struggled with that most recently, and I don't think anybody was being a jerk. Um, I think there was a difference about what's compatible and what's appropriate. And I also think we've got to evolve our perception of what's compatible. I mean, I know in my own environment, um, I find myself hoping that certain things happen that are much more in, in my neighborhood, that are, that are much more intense than I would ever previously have, you would ever have heard this old man or say. Um, but I realize that my perceptions now about what the ideal main community is have to evolve. And they have to change unless it's just gonna become this exclusive little resort.
I, I think that section, uh, with the last, um, the last application got approved by us, regardless of what could be happening in the courts, but, um, and and I think that the, the fact that the community was, was given the opportunity, that it came out better. What they started off with, what, what they ended with in that application was better than what they started off with, and they got pushed there.
Right.
It's been a struggle, but it's still, they, they still ended up getting it through, and, and people were allowed to express their, they were given the opportunity to express their objection. And I think because we are a community that allowed for that conversation, we are a stronger community as a result.
Um, yeah, some people didn't get that message and decided to sue anyway, but, but.
Yeah, and we, there was nothing in the code that would have stopped all of the arguing at cocktail parties and, and how it behind the scenes turned into apparently a huge, a huge argument. But I think the fact that we were able in that section to bring the conversation in front of the planning board, if we didn't have that section, there would be all these people that didn't feel that they were allowed to be heard.
Okay, I, I mean, that's, you know, that's a point that one, one can ask and, and consider. Um, does having that session allow a thorough community conversation? I mean, that's a reasonable question, an important question to ask. Um, you know, my one observation about that, that conversation that took place was that it, it was massively repetitive. And I didn't think that was constructive, but, um, but, um, but I but a community conversation is valuable and is appropriate. I don't have any, I agree with you totally.
The community, uh, input on permitting is only through the planning. They don't, they don't have any say on my issuing some permits unless they appeal it, the planning board appeals. Now, that two-year application that we were talking about, um, if they had divided their lot once, and then waited five years and divided it again, and met the minimum law requirements, they could have had six houses on that property under the ordinance.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I'm gonna completely jump around here. Does Luso, does Luso define what conflict of interest is relative?
No, we gotta go to Robert's rules.
Robert's rules.
Yeah.
And the MMA.
And, and the planning board, it's in the fine, under the planning board, man, I guess.
Yeah.
Kind of stopping the ordinance.
What brought that up, Bill?
Oh, just thinking about things and you know, um, just doing what you do and doing it for a lot of different people and, you know, being clear about not necessarily who you're doing it for, but you know, unless you have to, you know, and I think some of those moments of when you have to are perceived differently. You know, and I, I, um, I think that's important for all of us to have a really good, clear idea of when and where we need to declare a conflict of interest.
So is that a planning board conversation or a losing conversation?
You know, I
You know, like in other words, an ordinance language conversation?
Why isn't that in the ordinance or the?
Because it's in the
The main.
Rules, and so I'm sure it's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's the main revised statutes, it's, um, you know, it defines it.
I don't know, I didn't bring them.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, maybe.
Doesn't it have something about like, you know, you have to be financially engaged or something? I don't know, it's so difficult because you could have somebody that you're not working for with now. Um, it's, but that you hope to have, it, they could still be a conflict of interest because you'd like to work with them in the future. You know, and you.
Of course.
So I, I guess I feel like I agree with you, Bill, I guess, that I feel like it's, it's been a little loose and I sort of wondered whether we'd end up with, um,
Page nineteen.
Any issues?
Conflict of interests, bias, family relationships, financial conflict of interest, the section, this, this section, page nineteen of the MMA manual. This section discusses what is legally called a conflict of interest. It is a different type of conflict than the incompatibility of office rules discussed in chapter one. This type of conflict involves a direct or indirect financial interest. Statutory tests, there are several tests of what constitutes a conflict of interest. One is established by state statute in thirty eight. The statutory test applies only to a board member who is one, and officer, director, partner, associate, employee, or stockholder of a private corporation, business, or other economic entity which is making the application to the board or which will be affected by the board's decision. And two is directly or indirectly the owner, and there goes on from there. Um, appearance of impropriety. Even, I'm skipping here. Even if no legal conflict of interest exists, a board member would be well advised to avoid even the appearance of a conflict by abstaining from the board's discussion involved. And then, anyway, take a look at that section, starting on, of this, this edition, starting on page nineteen. And this edition is two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, I have that as well.
Yeah, so that may at least help us start a conversation about that. Um, if, and if we want to take it any further, or if it relieves your mind, or it's so difficult in, uh, in small towns. You constantly run into this, um, and people who tend to be drawn to and who do excellent job on boards are people with sometimes with specific knowledge um, and experience that, that helps you contextualize what the subject matter is, so. Um, that's, it is a tough one. It's always a tough one.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, when I was in the school, but it was really easy. Do you, do you work at the school? Does your family, media firm member work at the school? And then you can't be on the board.
Yeah, and we all live in this town, so the concept of like, are you a total, do you have no interest in this? It's like, we all have an interest in it, it's our town. We live here.
I think it's civic interest, and if you look at those sections that talk about a director, indirect, indirect potential financial interest or that sort of thing. Um.
Well, at the beginning of the, I mean, it was just when I got on the board, but, um, Ellen, the previous board chair had to drop off the board because it was determined. Yeah, that she had a conflict of interest with the quarry thing, and wasn't it just that she, she just had a strong opinion about it, or?
No, she lives in it, she.
Yeah.
What?
She signed the petition that was going on.
I think she lives up there in Hawthorne, she does, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah, and then you guys voted me in as chair. One year on the board.
Yeah.
Oh, was that how long? I didn't realize how long you'd been on the board.
That's.
Yes, that was, but. Uh, what else? Yeah, like getting the checklist. I, I know we joke about that every year, but getting the checklist fine tuned and God, if there was even a God, if there was even a shorter, short form, you know.
You've asked Noel year after year to get you guys, you know, these checklists and stuff, but.
I mean, we. You know, it, I, one, one checklist we commonly don't use is the long form checklist. And I don't know if Noel has parsed that thing and. Since the dawn of time, but um, you know, the. The short form always has tweaks to it and then um. Weren't we talking about forms specific for fences or chickens or something like that or? Maybe.
Fences and chickens seem like the like short. Things that should, that like maybe we should just have a specific form, so we're not discussing. Do you have a cell tower and are you doing a landing strip? Let's just have a form that goes cut straight to the chase and we could say you've got. A fence over six feet, let's discuss it, nothing else.
But I think just in general, I mean, we always mention the checklist, but.
Well, you always have to have section six A regardless.
Yeah.
No, six A, all of them. You know, you have to, cause that stormwater, that's erosion, that's all your, you know. Waterfall, blast, that has to be part of your application. For you.
Where where did section five nine come from? Is that, is that? Yeah.
It's always been the ordinance.
Section five nine for the shoreline additional criteria.
No, yeah, that's six A.
No, when we're in the shoreline, shoreline.
Five point nine.
Five point nine.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that that came on when we added the shoreline zoning to our ordinance.
Well, where did it come from? Cause that's state.
That's, that's under the, yeah, that's under the um chapter one thousand rules. Some of it's we done then.
That's what I'm getting at, like. Where did that language come from and? Is there any consideration for? Making that more efficient.
If we have. I'm taking that one out here. If we have. Applications. That especially like, like you talked about the one like chickens offenses or something like that. Is there a way, first of all, it would, it would be if we had all read them before. The hearing. And we could. Assume. And and we could start out having with a short form that's already eliminated. Clearly irrelevant provisions that you didn't have, you know, whether it's just checking it off, like instead of had you having to do it right here as they're going through it. Have it already. There as part of the process and then ultimately somebody's gonna make a motion that. Blah, 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 does not. Is not relevant. Is there some way of using that sort of sort of technique to streamline the conversation? And then you don't miss things like. Uh runoff and stuff like that, it's. I mean, I kind of played around with it with a with a couple of those last two at home, I sort of like, well, if we just went ahead with a motion. In advance, I said the following provisions don't apply. Boom. And then we got to the ones that did, um almost immediately, I don't know, I didn't quite. Work it out in my own small way, but I was thinking about it. I mean, your form is pretty good at that, but still you've gotta like sit here at the meeting and.
Well, anything that is just sort of a a straight up. Uh, I guess, I I just, I guess I'm going back to the the compatibility thing, like the chickens are in a a great example, like the only reason why. It was just a matter of. Achieving a certain criteria to have chickens. It would just go to Kim. But it gives the opportunity by by causing the chicken issue to come to us, it gives the opportunity for the neighbors to say. You know, I I don't wanna listen to chickens all day, you know, you can fill out your form and and. But you're gonna impact my life and. Uh, you know. And that 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 often creates is a, it's a a place and an opportunity for the neighbors to discuss and somebody said, oh, well, gosh, I'm sorry. We'll move the chickens to the other side or away from your bedroom window or, you know.
Well, I guess, I guess I'm gonna channel my old friend Joe Tracy here and say that I think that ordinance was designed. To provide. Enough boundaries so that that people shouldn't be doing that, people shouldn't be saying. We don't have any chickens in our neighborhood, I'm not sure I wanna start now, and you already have no roosters. You already have, it's gotta be screened, you already have, it's gotta be, it can't be smelled, you're already gonna have. There are already like a lot of safeguards in that ordinance. And so should someone who lives a couple houses down be able to say, yeah, I don't think I want chickens in the neighborhood? I mean, I don't.
Well, under that argument, then it doesn't need to come to the planning board at all, if you if you don't think people should be able to have the opportunity to. Object or have a like, then it's just a checklist, you know, do, are you taking proper care and you have the, are they off the setback line and everything and? But but they wanted to create this opportunity to make sure that it's compatible with the neighborhood, I mean, that's pretty much most everything that. Comes to the planning board, the reason why the planning board is here. And it's not just all sent to Kim. Is to 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 make sure that it's compatible. There are occasions, but and all the years, you know, there are occasions that people just say, I just don't like this, I don't. But it's pretty rare, generally, it's it's a really good thing.
Yeah, a- again, I don't think that. I mean, I've got uh on someone I'd like to have as a neighbor who's trying to build. A year round house. And the neighbor next door is taking the, I just don't want this here attitude and is being incredibly obstructive and. Um, and we all know about things like that, and so I don't. I don't know that that's a place. I don't know, I think this is a good example, actually, I don't, I think that. We've made a decision that we're gonna allow people to have chickens, I mean, I think in one of those applications we looked at out on. On Eastern Point, where the massive projects going on there, I think one of the plans suggested that there might be chickens or something like that at some point in the future. That's not in the character of that neighborhood. Should we, when that comes before, or should we say, oh, I don't think there are any other chickens in this neighborhood and we can't do that? I think there are, I think that, and that to do example, I think there are enough boundaries, if you didn't have a like no roof supervision or something, I wouldn't wanna listen to chickens of. Three, four, five in the morning either, so I get, I get that personally, but. But I think that's been taken care of. And again, we need to think about. What? You know, people wanna eat real food. And they don't wanna eat factory chicken and.
Nobody has been stopped from getting chickens.
Right, but you're talking about a situation in which you might let people. Protest under the compatibility section that they shouldn't have to have chickens in the neighborhood.
They still, they they still just have to follow, you know. Achieve the standards, we don't really have anything to say, your neighbors don't like this. It's the compatibility just opens up the conversation of saying. Are you, are you being considered, is this agreeable with your neighborhood and could you do a better job? Of making it agreeable and compatible with the neighborhood.
Yeah, that's where you and I have differences, I don't think that's our job description. It is not our job description to be neighborhood social workers, I just, I just, our job description is to. Is to interpret and apply the ordinances. Um, and yeah, we wanna do it in as constructive. A manner as possible, but. I don't think it goes to the point where we just say, let's use compatibility to let people just. Vent their feelings about it, even though the ordinance says we're gonna grant, you know, we're gonna have to grant it if they follow the guidelines, the specific guidelines anyway, I don't think that's a good use of. Compatibility. But that's my opinion and your your opinion.
Having been on the planning board for whatever it's been, seven, eight years now, that's, that's. What we have spent a lot of do that time doing is just opening up the conversation and. Making sure that that neighbors are talking to each other and people raise objections and usually. People say, that's not a problem, I didn't think of that, I I will be, you know, I'll just shift this around a little bit and then. We have happy neighbors.
Whatever happened to the car thing, like storing multiple cars on your lot?
That was cool.
That was cool.
That was cool. You can now have three unregistered cars, we tried to move it down to two. Unregistered cars.
But you can store them in a building.
If they're in the building.
As long as you don't see them, you can have a hundred in the woods, it doesn't matter, as long as you can't see them. And. There's, well, there's two in the ordinance, you can't have more than two, but the state statute says three, but. They either have to do license or inspect, uh registered or inspected to not count as a automobile graveyard.
Right, and if you ha- you have to be, you can have a hundred in the woods if you have an automobile graveyard permit in the state. Can't just do.
Yeah, right.
What happens?
Or, no, I mean, they have to be either registered or inspected, and they're not considered junk vehicles. Either or.
What happens if you have a car that's more than twenty five years old that doesn't require an inspection?
We, I think we dropped the inspection part that was registered, I'm not sure though.
Can't remember.
Because that that one point did come up.
Yeah.
Is uh, as a stored vehicle twenty five years or older. Does not have to be inspected.
Or then you become either obvious or if it's an antique. You know, do you drive it or do you just store it? And show it it shows, you know, what do you do with it?
Theoretically, the antique automobile plate is for a unmodified car.
And I think. That whole process is also worth discussing for a minute on a different way. We got that provision to a public hearing. Before the conversation developed within the board itself. Raising objections to the way in which it might impact people and then it got pulled. And my suggestion would be in as as much as possible, and that's one of the reasons why we're trying to organize things. Going throughout the year. That board members have those discussions and are engaged in those discussions kind of in an orderly fashion and we don't end up. Pulling things at. Such a late date. Because of concerns that come from within the board and it will be. Better. To try, I mean, sure, if the public raises it. That's their ti- that's their time to do that. But.
That's what happens, that's what happens every time.
Like the.
At the eleventh hour, we're ready, you guys are ready to make a decision, you got someone in the crowd that shows up only at the public hearing meeting, they never participate. Any of the other ones, that's when they bring up their questions.
Like the whole subdivision, they write, they haven't got.
No, and I'm just saying that's why some of the ordinances in the past have been phones, because that's when the public comes. When they're ready for the board, you know, the planning board to recommend or not. To the warrant.
Well, let me just point out that the goal, one of the goals of the work plan milestones. Is to have. Something like. Uh, not a public hearing, but have a couple of different outreach sessions. Throughout the year and with throughout this, the term in which. We put out a specific call to the public. And say, we're talking about these particular items, we'd love to hear what people are thinking. And just get some feedback. Throughout the year and then. Not wait until the last minute to have public hearings. But have public meetings, public meetings in late January and in February. Rather than waiting and and trying to get that stuff done so that if the, if objections come up. And they can be addressed and we can still go forward with things as far, but not push it up against the wall of. Of the warrant and the and the and the that whole timeline, so. There is. There will at least be an attempt. To. Build more conversations earlier. Into the year and certainly do public hearings before the the last year. And. Hopefully that will help, but that remains to be seen. Again, that's on the schedule, the the working draft schedule that Noel produced for our last meeting that and that. So.
Hard to get the general public engaged.
Yeah.
I know it was hard for me back when I. Was occupied all the time.
Well, I think, yes, one thing that would help is, I think we're gonna discuss how we do these. Public, I like it's on the August agenda, discuss ball public outreach, I think one of the things we can do is. What does that outreach look like? Do we produce? A document that describes in any sort of detail. What we'd like to have, get feedback on. Um, what we're working on so that there's that there's actual public notice about that. Um, that people can read if they choose to. And again, you're gonna have last, you're gonna have people show up at public meetings. Um, towards the end, but they're gonna be January twenty first, not. Not late lately. So. That's the hope.
It's curious the, about the public. Perception or lack thereof relative to the land use advisory committee, because I can't tell you how many times. Those kind of. Subjects. That should be in the Luso committee. Originate at the planning board. And they come to us and say, or me or. Kim or back to us and say, hey, look, you know, I got this lot over on South Shore and I don't understand why it's like. This and what do I do and? Well, let's uh. Feel that pineapple and I think you should go to the land use advisory committee. And maybe bring that up.
What I've been told by several people is that. The decision was made to form the loser committee because that is technically within the purview of the planning board and the planning board, of course, holds all the public hearings. By statute. But the planning board's plate was so full that it wasn't getting to have. Time to have, do the kind of work. That. One wants Luso to do and and Luso, people take care in the loser committee to say we're an advisory committee, I hear that. Repeatedly, cause I made the mistake of calling it a board or something, no, it's not a board, it's okay, I get it. Um, and um. So that's what I've been told the history was, but. And I think there's and and. From the perspective of other folks, they're, they want planning board members to participate in that process. So, but they realize it's another set of meetings and it's another set of extended conversations, so the hope would be that it's, it's the. My guess is the hope will be that the Luso is a bunch of worker bees, who are gonna try to workshop subjects and. And yeah, I mean, when we had this discussion about how we structure this year. I said. I wanna bring us back to the planning board every meeting and I want. I wanna do whatever we can to increase the dialogue between the committee and the board. Which doesn't include the board members from coming to the planet, to those meetings and expressing. Other than another meeting out.
This update, the land use advisory group mini or. Discussion is, is always gonna be on the fourth Wednesday of the month, it's not gonna be on the first week.
Right.
Cause you guys don't be able to meet once and it's the third Tuesday.
Just the mere discussion of all this is a huge step in the right direction, so.
Right.
Having you guys update us and key us in on how things are going and where they're going. And I think.
Already made progress scale on that one.
And I hope that it's a two way conversation and I'll do my best. And I'll do my best to separate out my perspectives and I mean, I'm pretty capable of saying, this is what I think, this is not the board and and in any event, I don't want. I don't wanna be going back to represent the planning board, I wanna be able to go and say, I hear people, some people on the planning board say. Right? And. And expressing, this is the concern that's being expressed, how do we address that concern? Is it a concern that other people have? How do we address that concern? But. Thank you.
Do we wanna do anything with Maxwell?
Do we want to do anything with maximum lot size? How we would come to. About. Having any recommendation on any of that. Taking. Some sort of radius of the neighborhood and you can have. X percentage, some of these lots are just so small.
Yeah.
That I can see would. You know, there's nothing wrong with gobbling up a little bit. You know, but if you, if we had some sort of. Mathematical plan that. You know, you can have seventy five percent addition to. Put the average size in such a radius or.
Well, I think that's all worth considering, I think what we ought to do is is let. The advisory committee actually get into some of those details, I mean, I sort of, and we haven't really done that, I. I mean, we brought it up, I mean, and then the thing I sent to Katrina, I said, you know, it seems to me that we've got to do a bunch of things like. Like. Figure out what kind of conversation you want to have with the the existing members of the community, define the boundaries of the communities. Define the lot sizes that are there, talk about what would be, how you determine. What a a maximum would be, you know, what 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 would be the inherent logic that you deploy for that? Um which neighborhoods you're talking about, I mean, there was also a discussion about. Whether or not there's areas of Otter Creek you'd want to have in this conversation too, and I don't, I don't know where any of that's. Headed at this point in time, um and then also how do you, what do you do to include the voices of the people? Uh and reach out to those the. These specific communities that might be affected by this because. As I said earlier, I can't see. Developing an ordinance that particularly impacts specific communities, sure, it's a subject matter for the entire town, but I can't imagine. If a community, you work up something and a community says, hell no. Um that the rest of the town would would vote to impose that over over their heads. So you'd want to involve people early and whether it's surveys or conversations and we haven't figured any of that out yet.
Yeah, and I I don't think, I've I've just not in thinking through scenarios and the like. Alan saying, some of the lots are so small, it could stand some gobbling up and I think we'll. In some of these, in these com- areas where we have a lot of little lots that we're talking about protecting to have. A lot of little lots, like we need more housing, not less, so. What would be the disadvantage or should it be in those areas minimum? Lot size and minimum house size so that somebody can't. Or building size so that. To prevent some a wealthy person from coming and buying two lots next to each other and buying it out of and and building an out of scale house. With the neighborhood like.
Well, that's one of the big objectives of this, I think, that's one of the big concerns, I don't necessarily agree with Alan that there are s- small enough lots that can be gobbled up. Um. And that's just my take.
Well, I guess I just say, oh, say like, why not just put it all out there and see what the reactions are, because I don't. I don't know that I can think of all of the scenarios that would impact people. But I sort of feel like the approach of this is to say, let's keep as many lots as we have and as many houses as we ha- have and not let this. These areas get. Um. You know, bought and developed. A new and larger. Which or or people even buying a nice affordable house and then slowly expanding it. Uh oh, and buy the neighbor's lot eh when they've their careers have excelled and. And then suddenly we, well, we'll all have that opportunity and there won't be any affordable housing, you know.
I I think that's one of the engines. Behind this um eh the by behind this concern and um. So I. Again, I what the what you end up fixing is the maximum lot size is at five thousand square feet is that, remember you still have a forty percent coverage. You know, lot coverage, I think from, is it, are there?
Village commercial seventy five percent.
Okay, so village commercials, so then then you need to look at that too, whether or not that area should remain village commercial, like why that whole area is still in city. I mean, there are commercial. Properties in here, there's the plumbing supply, there's, you know, Haynes Garage, there's, there's a couple of other places.
Village village commercials really be district too, because there's all kinds of footnotes to it too about. Specifics to certain lots and certain locations and what you can do and, you know, how close you can get to the lot line or. What setbacks apply or what setbacks don't, you know, you know, and some also. You know, that district has, I swear, more footnotes to it than. Any other district I can think of, other than like. Some of the weird lots on those ponds where there's a hundred foot setback, but. You know, and I don't know, and maybe those, some of those are metrics and helping. You know. Conceive ideas about maximum lot size.
Right, I mean, I mean, basically what we're trying to respond to is preexisting. Yeah, preexisting. Totally. Woven district, they're not that. You know, that these are probably, for instance, long before there's a code.
Don't a lot of places, you know, in some sort of historic district, they would have. Separate rules that they would have to adhere to. Versus where like I live.
Sure, you have a lot of that, you have a lot of that in some areas, like you can't sort of paint, you could get right down to paint colors if you want.
And we could.
Not here.
You don't, you don't have a historic district, you could do from the National Historic Preservation, which is a film, but. We don't have colors requirements, um we have no review. Maybe that we, you know, reviews, applications for styles, colors, something like that. I don't think, I don't think you want that near either.
I don't think, I I I'd be very wary about establishing that, I think the whole business of styles and everything has to look like everything that's already there, it doesn't account for the fact that things change. And communities evolve, architectural styles change, architectural opportunities change. Why say, yeah, why say that it always has to be completely in character with what was built there a hundred years ago? I I. I don't think that allows for.
Well, you don't see that anymore so much insult well either because. You know, there is a historic district, but if they have no federal funding or no state funding. Then they can only recommend that you follow the architectural design of the preservation, but they can't. Mandatory require you to do it.
Right, I know that.
I'm like, yeah, you you're right in the middle of it.
Well, I used, I used to have the the National Historic District sign. Right in front of my lot before and and and. And my first architectural design was a shed roof with windows off to the to one side and. I liked it a lot. Cause I hate a lot of bends and curves and roofs, I just think it's. Hassle and I don't, I like the minimalist look, but I finally had to go to the architect and say, look at this sign down here. People are gonna look up past that sign and see this structure. We at least got to do a gable and then I had a somewhat of a battle. I felt so much better after I finally said that and but we had to have a long discussion, then we had a long discussion about over, so then we had. He won the opening argument, which I'm glad about, but um. But yeah. I mean, for me, the real business test was the day that somebody came in, one of the members, August members of the local community came in to get. While we were building to get my husband to sign a death certificate, and I said, let me show you around, and he said, this is truly nice, and I'm like. But now we have the trees and and it's. Thank you very much. And there's not, and we don't have brush angles, but I was certainly sensitive to the vernacular, I was not willing to say, we need white clavins. Because that's actually not what everybody is. But um.
And that wasn't anything in in the code or anything that required you to do any of that, it was just people will express their opinions when you live in a community.
Yes, and I had to take that back to the architect who said, and I say, I need to respect at least the vernacular. I need to not stick out like a sore thumb and I do think that's important. But my long term goal. You know, I'm not doing white clavard and I'm not doing. I mean, there is, there are gonna be, there's gonna be respect to it, but there's not gonna be gen deflection and. And I don't want it to look like everything else and. Besides, I could point to plenty of other examples along. Um so and and we're much closer to the one stop. Funeral, so um. So, so yeah, those discussions are important, I think, and I don't think you should allow people to just totally disregard them. Like personally, I don't, but. Other mileage may be.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Well, we're in an. About an hour into the update.
Yes, we're done, I'm done if you're done.
Meredith, are you done?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for the. Seeing back and um.
Thorough, keep it up, look forward to hearing from you guys again.
Yes, when 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 we have other meetings with two, two notebooks to process, they won't be as extensive.
I know.
The meetings are always recorded if you want a really fun evening.
Let it sound like for the reminder.
I I I tried to re- rewatch. Our last one and I, I got about five minutes into it and I said, ah, that's good enough.
You mean the the one at the quarry?
No, our our last crucial meeting.
You guys earned your money that night, I did.
Rewatched, it's been like three hours.
I watched it all.
Okey dokey.
I moved to adjourn.
I second that.
Right, all those in favor in the room, uh Meredith?
Hi.
Notebooks in here, Meredith.
Oh, okay, I have to come by anyway. Bill, I I sent you those questions. Uh I sent you an email with some questions.
Okay.